Good evening and welcome to tonight's public hearing. This hearing will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I am Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem of Columbus City Council and Chair of these committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel 3. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. Tonight's hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review legislation in the committees that I chair. This includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and the Workforce Development Committees. The goal of these hearings is to promote transparency and provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and to speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be on occasions on which a committee is not covered because legislation is not always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on city council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight, we will hear information on legislation in Health and Human Services and the Finance Committees. In addition, we'll be covering legislation in this hearing. The -- in addition, we'll be covering the 2016 First Quarter Financial Review. In the first segment of this hearing, I will ask Finance Director Joel Lombardi to review the city's financial position. Also presenting legislation this evening besides Director Lombardi will be the -- from Columbus Public Health, Assistant Health Commissioner Dr. Mashika Williams-Roberts, and from the Department of Development, Special Projects Coordinator Hannah Reed. We will begin the hearing with -- we will begin this hearing with the first quarter review, then move into legislation. The first quarter review will examine the projected financial condition of our city for the remainder of the year based on a review of revenues and spending to date for all departments and offices. This review only accounts for the first few months of the year and is not as predictive as a financial analysis that will occur in subsequent to this. While this review is important, we look forward to assessing the city's finances in the months to come to make sure we are on track to meeting projected revenue estimates. It is this type of careful management of our city's finances that is important in to our credit rating. Columbus continues to be the largest city in America to receive a AAA bond rating from the three major credit rating agencies. As I have traveled and have the opportunity to learn about what is happening in cities throughout our country, I can say with certainty that Columbus is one of the best managed cities in the entire country. With that, I will turn it over to Director Lombardi to present the first quarter review. Director Lombardi.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. This evening, I'd like to just give a brief overview of our first quarter review. As you had indicated, this is the least predictive of all the quarterly reviews that the Finance Department does. I wanted to thank my staff, Aileen Heiser and Adam Robbins, and all their staff who work very hard to put all these numbers together for all of us, and they do all the heavy lifting, as I would like to say. Just a quick word on the revenue side. The city auditor establishes those official general fund revenues for the city, and the Finance Department is responsible for the expenditures, so there's the separation of power when it comes to our financial situation. As of the first quarter review, we are expecting most of the general fund departments are tracking below budget. There are some deficits in personnel. Most of that is due to reorganization or changes in personnel, so as we move forward in the year, we will continue to monitor that and ensure that those -- any deficits that will be offset through savings and other areas. Our first slide this evening shows our revenue, our fund balance. At the beginning of 2016, when you take in the outstanding encumbrances, which we consider as expenditures, the unencumbered balance starting January 1 of 2016 was $30,721,859. When we add the estimated revenue from the city auditor of $795 million, plus any encumbrance cancellations of $2.3 million, plus transfers and in from the SIT and from the Basic City Services Fund of about $7 million, we had a total resource available to us of $835.2 million. As of the first quarter review, we are projecting expenditures of the first quarter of $832.8 million. That gives us a projected appropriation surplus of about $2.4 million as of the first quarter review. So that is a surplus that we're looking at in the first quarter review. And our -- just to go over a couple of the funds that we put money into, the first one is the Economic Stabilization Fund, better known as the Rainy Day Fund. We put a promise out to our voters that during the income tax increase that we would make sure that we refund the Rainy Day Fund back to a total of $75 million as of 2018. Our projection by the end of this year will be $69.6 million in that fund, so we are getting closer and we should -- we will hit that target in 2018. The next fund is the Anticipated Expenditure Fund, which is also known as the 27th Pay Period. So as you know, every once in a while, we have 27 pays in a year. Actually, in 2016, we have 27 paid periods, but not 27 pays. So the next time that will happen where our employees will get paid 27 times instead of 26 will be in 2020. So this fund is being built up for that anticipated expenditure in 2020. And then the Basic City Services Fund was established to offset reductions to our local government funds that we would receive normally. So at this time, at the end of December of this year, we are anticipating a balance of $3.3 million in that Basic City Services Fund. If we look at where our revenues come from, obviously, the largest portion comes from our income tax, which is trending very well as of the first quarter review. And then all the other revenues are pretty flat going into the rest of the year. I think we're still predicting a 2.9% increase in our income tax revenue for the year 2016. So if you would look at -- a closer look at more detail of those other funds, you can see where we stand in relation to the last three years. The local government fund, our fines and penalties, license and fees, and all other revenue that come into our city. As I said, we are projecting a $2.4 million surplus at this point. Where are those coming from? We are seeing a surplus in our utility costs. That is natural gas, electric, water, sewer, and also in our fleet, in our fuel. Our fuel, as everyone knows that has a car, fuel prices have remained low to steady, and we're starting to see a little bit of a savings in that, and we'll continue to monitor that as the year goes on. Hopefully, those prices will stay down for us throughout the summer and into the winter. And then the last slide this evening I'd like to share with you is our overtime projection for the Department of Public Safety. Currently, both police uniformed and fire uniformed are trending to meet the projections of the current budget. We have included in this overtime projection the Community Summer Initiative Program. We've also included monies for Red, White &amp; Boom and other summer festivals. Obviously, we have the Ohio State University football games that will come in the fall and other events that may cause those overtime dollars to be used. We'll work with the Public Safety Department to ensure that those overtime costs are being controlled. That is really a high-level briefing that I had for you this evening. If you have any questions, I'll be more than willing to answer them.
Yes, I have a few questions. The first question is, revenue was strong in the first quarter this year, particularly with the income taxes, and is there anything to which this strong revenue can be attributed?
President Pro Tem Tyson, I believe if the income tax trending upward is basically due to an overall -- our local economy is growing. Columbus continues to grow. As you have probably read in recent articles in the media, Columbus is one of the fastest-growing cities, and I believe with all the, you know, the development that we've had that is helping our income tax, and people are staying here in the city of Columbus. So it is very helpful that we have the businesses and large corporations that are housed here in the city of Columbus, such as, you know, Nationwide and others that are here in town. So I would attribute that to the -- just the local economy is still doing well, is doing well for a city of this size.
Thank you. That's really exciting because I know that this first quarter that our income tax revenue was up 6.4% over last year, so that's pretty tremendous.
Yes, that's very good. Working with Auditor Dorian, we are working together on the 3% that he is seeing, and we both see the same thing as the first quarter, and I take a lot of wisdom from him when it comes to the revenue estimate.
Thank you. So on the expense side, which is the area that you're clearly more responsible for, where are we seeing savings and where are we seeing some of the deficits?
Most of the savings are going to come from our utility costs and especially in fuel for all of our vehicles. On the deficit side, again, what we're seeing mostly is in personnel, and it's -- again, it has a lot to do with some reorganization that may have occurred at the beginning of the administration and some other divisions, and we are monitoring that. We know that we have a surplus that we can, you know, if we need to make sure those deficits are taken care of through any offset. And going back to your original question about the savings, again, we're looking at all personnel. All personnel comes through me for signature and approval. So they -- our departments are doing a very good job of keeping the vacancies down and as far as filling them and delaying those vacancies until they're needed. So working collaboratively together, we're making an effort on the expenditure side.
So you mentioned overtime expenses for police and fire, and I know that they appear to be trending up. And perhaps Public Safety would -- can speak to this, but were there, what are the reasons for the increase in police and fire? I did hear that you said that you think by the end of the year, you don't hopefully see that the trend will continue to be there and there'll be any deficits, but could you address the issue right now?
Yeah, so right now, we work with the Department of Public Safety on their overtime. There's a formula that they use based on -- basically looking at what they've spent year-to-date and then doing an average and then looking at how many more months we have to go. Plus, they build into their formula any of those summer events, the -- again, the OSU football games. We are sending some officers up to the RNC in Cleveland. You also have a presidential election that will cause some overtime, but we really don't feel like that is going to impact their overtime to a point where we would be in a situation where there was a deficit in their overtime. I think we would work with them very closely to ensure that those monies are spent, you know, as we can. And hopefully, with the RNC, we'll get a reimbursement from the city of Cleveland for that effort that we're providing police officers for.
And clearly, I think that, as you just mentioned, part of your, I think, the budget planning would have anticipated that it's a presidential election and, again, the increase in services for all the summer events and things of that nature.
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you. And the last question, are there any major anticipated expenses that we need to plan for and expect during the last three quarters of this year?
Nothing unusual is on the horizon. Obviously, there could be any kind of an event, especially with the weather, you know, if we have any kind of a weather situation. But right now, we don't anticipate any kind of unusual expenditure to happen on the horizon in the next three quarters, so.
Okay, I know we had not anticipated even having the special election that we're going to have in August, so how will that affect our budget?
Right, so we've incorporated some money into the budget for that special election. We're looking at different funds that we can use. We know that that's going to be an expense that we're going to have to pay for. I want to say, if I remember, it's about $1 million, if not a little bit more, for that special election in August. We will have to find the money to pay for that, but we think that there are funds that we will be able to use to pay for that special election in August.
All right, well, thank you for the presentation. The city is financially in a very good position, and I appreciate the work of Aileen and Adam in preparing for this hearing, and I look forward to the second quarter hearing and seeing where we stand at that point. I'm glad that we have $2 million to be -- at this point, to be used as we continue to think about 2007 -- $2 million as we're going to think about 2017. So, thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
And now we can go ahead and proceed to your legislation.
Okay, the Department of Finance this evening has, I believe, I want to say, there's several resolutions that will be coming to council for consideration. Those are Resolution 014X, 0142X, 0143X, and 0144X 2016. All these resolutions will be for our voted bond package. These will be our, what we call our Resolutions of Necessity. The voted bond package is a total of $950 million. It will cover public safety and health, recreation and parks, public service, which includes streets, and public utilities. There will be a series of hearings starting tomorrow evening at Glenwood for the community, and we would ask that the community please come out and listen to our presentations and be part of the process. We will put the voted bond package on a November ballot to ask consideration to our citizens to vote on those. Why do we do a voted bond package? Well, it gives us a little bit of a better interest rate, number one. Number two, our rating agencies like the fact that our citizens approve our voted bond packages in the past. That gives us a little bit more with them in keeping our AAA bond rating. Also, as you know, we, in a voted bond package, we do have the ability, should we have to assess the property taxes to pay for that, but that has never been done by the city of Columbus, and that is a great record that we have as a city, that we've never had to do that over all these years. For the general fund voted bond package, a quarter percent of the income tax is set aside to pay for the debt, and for public utilities, water, sewer, stormwater and electricity, those, any monies that they bond will be paid through their user fees. So I would encourage, you know, our citizens to come out to our four locations. I believe they are at Glenwood tomorrow night. It is at Wetstone on Thursday, June 9, Barnett Community Center on June 15, and Marion Franklin Community Center on June 16. So those will be our four community meetings that I would encourage our citizens to, if they have a chance, to come out and be part of this process with the city.
Director, can you also share the times of those meetings?
Sure, those meetings will run from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on those evenings.
Thank you, and I too would encourage the citizens to attend. We -- the last bond package that the citizens approved was in 2013, and we were certainly out in those same communities sharing the bond package. And our citizens overwhelmingly supported this bond package. And again, as you just mentioned, it certainly -- we've not had an increase in property taxes to be able to pay for the capital projects within our community. So it's a great opportunity for our residents to come out to these hearings. They will hear about for 700 -- we're looking at 770 million, I said 70 million dollars in public safety and health, and 110 million for recreation and parks, and 310 million for public service, and 460 million for public utilities. And again, I would encourage residents to please come out, hear what we have. Part of the hearings, part of these meetings will share what we did with the 2013 bond package, which I think is really important, and then begin to share what we want to do for the residents in our community for this bond package. So it's an exciting package, and again, it just goes to the quality of life in our community, which is key to, I know, each of our residents, and there's work will be going on in all neighborhoods, which is wonderful. So, so thank you, and please come out for our viewing and listening audience. Okay.
Okay, our next ordinance is 1550-2016, and this ordinance is just a standard budget amendment that occurs prior to a bond sale. As you know, we also are ready to have a bond sale based upon the passage of the capital improvement budget. This just aligns all the budget authority and amends all the numbers and aligns everything correctly to make sure that it's the same as the bond sale. So this is just an annual realignment of funds for the bond sale. The next ordinance is 1473-2016, and this is an authorized strength update ordinance. As you know, we typically pass an authorized strength at the time of the operating budget in early January and February. This is our first update of that authorized strength, and the majority of the reason for the alignment of the authorized strength is the new Neighborhoods Department that the mayor has created. That department would include our 311, our Neighborhood Pride, our Neighborhood Liaisons, and our CRC, our Community Relations Commission. So that -- those groups will all be combined together into one department to serve our neighborhoods, and so the majority of this ordinance for the realignment of the authorized strength is the development of that department.
And that department, again, will have 39 FTEs, and there's no additional staffing? Is that my understanding?
That is correct. That is correct.
Thank you.
The next ordinance is Ordinance 1070-2016, and this is to allow American Electric Power an easement for utility services on the property at Griggs Reservoir. We are building the La Shetka Recreation Center. Used to be the old damned Tenders House. Got to be careful with that one. That is going to be a multi-use facility named after former Mayor La Shetka. It is under construction right now, and we anticipate the completion of that the fall of this year. So this is the grant an easement for AEP to provide the electric service to that building.
Thank you, and you're saying that it'll be completed by the end of 2016?
The fall of 2016, yes.
And that's the historic building that is across the river from where we have the Women's Boathouse?
That is correct, yes. So it'll be a nice event center on the river for us.
Be another opportunity for -- and will this be rented out through Recreation and Parks as the rest of our facilities are?
Yes, this is a Recreation and Parks building, so this will be rented out through them.
Okay, thank you, excellent. Good use for that building, because it's just been sitting there vacant.
It is. It'll be a neat building, very neat.
Thank you.
Ordinance 1456-2016. This is to modify and renew a contract with 2K General for repair and maintenance for certain facilities that are under the purview of the Facilities Management Division. The original contract was formally bid out, and it was under $20,000, so we did not have to bring that to council for legislation. It did allow for four one-year renewals. This is one of those renewals that we want to bring. This will help us with some additional contracting services that cannot be completed in-house by our facilities management maintenance staff. However, we do work with the company. We go out and look at different site assessments to decide what needs to be maintained and what needs to be repaired, and this is what this contract helps us with.
All right, and again, this is the second of the four year for $45,000.
This is the second one, yes.
All right, thank you.
Next ordinance is 1507-2016, and this is to authorize the Finance Management Director to enter into -- to modify an existing contract with Windscape Inc. for mowing, landscape maintenance, and snow removal services at various city facilities in the amount of $10,000. We are actually adding money to a current contract. We have some additional sites that we are going to be responsible for, the lawn care. Some of those sites include the future site of Police Substation Number One, the future site of Fire Station Number 35, and the heliport. These were not originally part of our responsibility, and now that they are, we needed to add a little bit of money to that contract to make sure that those are always maintained until we begin building on those sites.
Thank you.
Next ordinance is 1513-2016, and this is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter in a contract on behalf of the Construction Management Division with Bomar Construction Company for the renovation of the exterior doors and security desk at 90 West Broad Street. This is City Hall. We are going to remove the existing Front Street Security Desk and reconstruct a new security desk at the Front Street exit. We're also going to add a new revolving door, which will be installed at the Front Street entrance, and add turnstiles, which will be installed at the security desk to better manage the access to and from City Hall. So this is the renovation of our security desk that we have currently at Front Street, and it will enhance our security and the access of folks coming in and out of the building. So it's a -- it's well worth the money, and it's needed just from a security standpoint as well.
Thank you. Certainly, as we want to make sure that -- we want to keep our residents safe at all times, we certainly want to make sure that the public and our employees are also going to be safe. And so excited about this renovation within City Hall that makes everyone feel much more comfortable being in this space.
Yes.
This is -- and this contract's for $749,000, almost $750,000.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
The next ordinance is 1539-2016. This authorizes the Department Director of Finance and Management to pay for insurance. This is in the amount of $546,700, and this is an annual contract that we must do. We must provide insurance to our city facilities on the general fund, and this includes property, casualty, boiler, machinery, aviation, and general liability insurance. It is with Wells Fargo Insurance Services. It was competitively bid. It is a five-year period with -- this is the first renewal. We'll have four renewals, so we set it up for one year, and it allows us to yearly to renew that contract. So it's insurance for our city facilities is really what we're paying Wells Fargo for.
Thank you, Director. And so most of this, the expense of the $546,700 comes out of a special fund, the property And so most of this, the expense of the $546,700 comes out of a special fund, the Property Insurance Fund. But can you share with me, discuss a portion of the fund that comes out of the general fund, which is $151,000, almost $152,000? What is that for?
Yeah, that is for the Department of Safety, for the heliport, for the helicopters. That's part of that aviation, part of the insurance.
Thank you.
And last, we have Ordinance 1553-2016, and this is the city support of the Greater Arts Council for the Greater Columbus Film Commission. The city's support of 2016 is for $90,000. $37,500 of that was authorized in 2015. This ordinance is for the remainder, which is $52,500. Again, Columbus continues to be a hub for filming, as we know. Mr. Travolta was in town for a while and doing some filming, and I'm not sure for the next Hollywood, but certainly it's great that Columbus is being used to film some different movies in the industry, and this money goes to help for that effort.
Thank you. Well, certainly, we want to support the arts in the city of Columbus. I mean, do that with, through the Greater Columbus Arts Council. And there's certainly different types of art, and film is one, and one medium, and so it's important that we support that and, again, try to promote our city so that, as you mentioned, Mr. Travolta was here, but certainly try to promote our city within the filming, becoming a filming destination. So, thank you very much.
And that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. All right, our next presenter, I'd like to transition to Health and Human Services. And first, I would ask Dr. Mashika Williams-Roberts to provide comment on her legislation from the Health Department. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. Columbus Public Health has one piece of legislation on the agenda for this evening, and that's Ordinance Number 1524-2016, to enter into a contract with the National Restaurant Association. This ordinance authorizes the Board of Health to enter into a contract with the National Restaurant Association for the provision of Serve Safe books for the Food Protection Program to teach the Serve Safe classes to food facility workers. The contract with the National Restaurant Association is in the amount of $35,000, and it is to purchase 545 books in a variety of languages. The Serve Safe books are the sole source and are provided by the National Restaurant Association. The Food Protection Program at Columbus Public Health uses these books to teach the Serve Safe Managers Class to food facility workers. The Ohio Food Code requires that all facilities that prepare food have to have one person, at least one person, that has successfully passed this class. The books are a textbook that comes with a test answer sheet, as well as a few extra answer sheets in case someone has to retake the test. Classes are offered at Columbus Public Health every month. The class is a two-day class, and the individual study the book between the two days and then take a 90-question test at the end to get their certificate. Therefore, the Columbus Public Health requests approval to waive competitive bidding on this contract since the National Restaurant Association is the sole supplier of this textbook.
Thank you, and I certainly understand why we have to waive competitive bidding, and also understand the importance. Well, can you just share the importance of individuals having the certification?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned, this is part of the Ohio Revised Food Code, but more importantly than that, the Serve Safe class goes over the basics of food handling in order to prevent food poisoning or anyone from getting sick from food that is not properly cared for and is not properly cooked. So at least one person at every food facility has to have successfully passed this class so they can pass the information on to the other employees working in that facility to make sure they're following all the rules and codes for the state of Ohio.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
You're welcome.
And our final presenter for this evening is Hannah Reed to cover legislation in the Department of Development. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Tyson. We have one ordinance for consideration this evening. Ordinance 1465-2016 is our appropriation from HUD to the Community Shelter Board for the Emergency Solutions Grant in the amount of $580,931. The purpose of the grant is to effectively and efficiently enable our community to help individuals and families who are homeless resolve their housing crisis. I would like to call the Operations Director from Community Shelter Board, Ms. Leanna Barbu, to the podium to discuss how they utilize the funding.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson. The legislation before you is for federal dollars for two types of homeless programs. The first is shelter. With your support, we will provide life-saving emergency shelter for 10,000 people this year. Emergency shelters keep, help keep people safe until they can land back on their feet. The other program supported with this funding is our housing program for families through the Salvation Army, Homeless Families Foundation, and Volunteers of America. Families in shelter are linked to employment and job training, support services, medical care, and housing resources focused on ending the homelessness crisis quickly and stabilizing people in housing. With this housing funding, we can also help families with short-term financial assistance for first month's rent, security deposit, or utility payments. You'll be glad to know that your investment helps us leverage more than $2.6 million in other local funds for these programs. Thank you for your support of these programs that help the most vulnerable citizens of our community, and I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
First of all, just want to say thank you for the work that you do within your agency. I appreciate your work. And it's pretty amazing to think that 10,000 people come through the shelter system every single year. And certainly, that's not a number that we want to continue to have, but I know the numbers have been growing in our community. So I appreciate the work that your organization is doing to help individuals move from being homeless to being able to have a home. Also, just appreciate that with the dollars, that these are federal dollars, so it's great to get federal dollars in our community, and that you're able to leverage these dollars by, with $2.6 million to be able to serve our homeless residents. So I just want to say thank you for the work that you do, and happy that we're able to get these dollars from the federal government to support the work in Columbus. And again, I know that this community would love to end homelessness.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you so much. I hope, so I hope this evening's hearing has provided insight into the city's current financial position, as well as information on programs and community initiatives from Columbus Public Health and the Department of Development and Finance as it relates to the ongoing city operations and certainly hearing the first quarter report. As residents, these hearings are an opportunity for you to learn and become engaged in issues that we have presented this evening. Before I conclude tonight's hearing, I want to thank the Department of Finance Director Joel Lombardi, and again, Eileen and Adam. I want to thank Columbus Public Health Assistant Health Commissioner Dr. Mashika Williams-Roberts, the Department of Development Special Projects Coordinator Hannah Reed, and also always want to thank my fellow council members and their staffs who really work hard each and every day to serve our community with pride. I also want to thank individuals from the Legislative Research Office, and so especially Michael Kessler, who leads the Legislative Research Team, and Andrew Dwyer, who staffs Health and Human Services and Workforce Development. I also want to thank Matt Erickson, who staffs the Finance Committee, and also Brendan Kelly, who is here, who's also a part of our, I'm going to call Team Tyson. So thank you for all, for them for being here. And then my staff, Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, who work really hard. We have a very busy committee, and so I thank them for their efforts. And then the hard-working team at CTV who make these hearings possible. And last but not least, I just really want to thank the residents who allow us to do this work in our community, because it is, like I said, you live in Columbus or work in Columbus, we work for you every single day. So thank you, and I hope this hearing has provided you with the information that you find necessary from the city of Columbus. This hearing is now adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.